Hi, everybody. My name is Rochelle and I am this year's chairperson for the Flathead Area Young Professionals. And we just wanted to thank you for joining us today for our Flathead Commissioner Candidate Forum. So for those of you that don't know, the Flathead Area Young Professionals is a segment of the Kalispel Chamber. And we are a development group for young professionals ages 21 to 39, anywhere here in the valley. And the heart of FAYP is committed to providing professional and personal growth opportunities. So today, we have opened this event for everybody. So those of you that are not currently Flathead Area and Professional members, thanks for joining us. Kind of the flow of this morning is we're going to start with someone from the election office to give us some updates. We'll hear from each of our candidates giving you a little bit of information about themselves. And then we'll open it up for question and answer. So at the bottom of your screen, you should see a little button that says Q and A. Feel free at any time during today's event, if you have a question, type it in there. And we'll do our best to get through those questions and get those questions out. So with that being said, many of you know with everything that's going on right now, this year's voting is going to be a little bit different as we won't be having voting in person. So we've invited Monica Eisenzheimer, our election administrator, to give you the rundown on this year's do's and don'ts, and what you should know and what you should do. So we'll turn it over to Monica. Although, change of plans.
There she is.
So if you want to give us just one minute, soon as Monica's connected, then we'll have her give you the rundown. And if you have any questions, just type them in that Q and A down at the bottom of your screen.
Okay, so the rundown you want to know is about the election or? Can you hear me?
Things that are going to be different this year, what we should know, shouldn't know, things to watch out for, just any best practices, tips and tricks?
Okay, so so far, the difference obviously is that social distancing and everybody's been at home. But as far as the election goes, it's all by mail. All the active voters have been sent ballot packets, packets that have all three ballots. They vote one and return it, they throw the other two out. That's been pretty, that part has been pretty well received, they've understood that part. It's been, actually, it's been very well received that their ballots are all coming by mail. There's a couple of people that have not liked it, but for the majority, love it and are requesting absentee ballots for the future. As far as our office, the difference is we'll accept them all, open them up, count them on beginning on Monday at the fairgrounds. That's where we'll also have results from on June 2nd. Otherwise, the process is the same as all the time with absentee voters. So now everybody's basically an absentee voter. Is there any direct questions you guys have that I can answer?
Monica, this is Kate from the Kalispel Chamber and our staff lead for Flathead Area Young Professionals. I know there's a lot of people that have never voted by mail before or every year kind of have some questions about how to handle the three different ballots that come, the Green Party, the Republican Party, and the Democratic Party one. Could you just talk a little bit about how to handle all of the different, you know, paperwork that comes in, in the mail with everybody and just working through one ballot?
Yeah, the instructions are, the legislature last year changed the law that they vote one ballot to instruct them to vote one ballot and the other two, they keep a hold of or destroy, we don't get them back. It seems to have made it a little clearer to people. The questions we get are, do they have to just vote on one ballot? Because there's people on different ballots they want to vote for. But we explain to them that this is a nominating election. They'll get to vote whatever party they want on the general ballot. That's always a question every year, especially for people that come from out of state because they apparently only get one ballot. Here, they get all, whatever ballots qualify for the primary, they get, whether it's two or three or four. So instructing them, they can vote one ballot, the others just get rid of. It's pretty clear this year in the instructions and usually they try to send back two, but only one will count, as always. The packets are the same and the, and since 70% of our voters already voted absentee, we're not getting a whole lot of questions from the new ones because they were also issued two ballots at a polling place. But because they can only vote one, they handled it that way there. So they're kind of used to that. And if they're active voters here, most of them are experienced voters. There's some that are new every year, but we handle those people by people, you know, case by case. I don't know, I'm so used to doing this, it's hard to know really what you guys are wondering about, you know? We're not getting a lot of phone calls. I mean, we're getting a few just because people don't understand why they haven't gotten a ballot. If they haven't gotten a ballot, it's because they're an inactive voter. They call us, we'll help them get set up, so then we get a ballot out to them. The other, really, that's the only reason they are not getting ballots. If their address is changed, of course, their ballot isn't getting to them. We'll help them get that updated so we can get them the ballot too.
Monica?
Yeah.
When should a person have their ballot back in the mail by?
If you're going to mail it, make sure you mail it by the 22nd. So you give it at least a week to get back here, just because sometimes there's delays and because they all go to Missoula. The post office tries to hold on to the local ones that last week. So we get them all, but you know, just to avoid that, get them in the mail by the 22nd. We will have a drop box here all the time. We have it now, people are bringing their ballots and dropping them off. Also, on Election Day, we'll have drive-by ballot boxes by our office at the fairgrounds. And we're setting up three drop offs in Big Fork, Columbia Falls, and Whitefish to help voters that way.
And will they be able to go online and see where those drop locations are?
Yes, we haven't advertised them yet because once they go online, people will think they'll be open all the time. And so we're waiting until closer to the election to let them know. Because really, the best, best thing is with this ballot, since there's no stamp required, is to get it in the mail so it gets delivered by mail. Also, if you're dropping off ballots for other people at any drop off box, you have to make sure that ballot interference paper is filled out. And we have to have that if you're dropping off someone else's ballot. So being mailed is the easiest for the voter and for administration wise as well.
Well, thank you so much, Monica. We really appreciate you kind of giving us a quick rundown and just some tips and tricks. And hopefully, you're not too hard this voting season.
It's getting, it's getting better now. There was a lot leading up to it, all the changes, every week, we were waiting for a different change. And you know, when you're planning a party for 60,000 people, you kind of got to have a little better plan. And ours kept changing and we still don't know what November's going to be like, but we'll wait till October to find out.
And we appreciate all that you guys are doing behind the scenes to make it easy for all of the residents. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And if you ever have any questions, we're always open to answering them.
Perfect. All right, so now we're going to move on to our candidates. We're going to give them each two minutes. Kate is going to run a timer for us to just kind of give us their pitch. Tell us whatever they want us to know. And we're going to start with Elliot Adams.
Hey, everybody. Hey, thanks for hosting this, this is a good, good event here. And hey, my name's Elliot Adams and I am 31 years old. I'm running for Flathead County Commissioner. I'm married with three kids, we've got a fourth one on the way. And I work in the construction trades, I've done that for quite a while now. Doing HEAC work. So I've done a lot of that around the Flathead Valley. And I currently serve on the Flathead County Planning Board. And I am, so I'm running for Commissioner now and I'm focused on public safety. I know one of the needs that we have here in Flathead County is a new jail. And I know we're going to need to get that at some point. The timeframe on that kind of varies depending on what numbers you're looking at, but it is something that's on the horizon, we do need to be addressing soon. So public safety is a big one to me. And protecting private property rights is very important to me, as are all of our individual liberties. So as a county commissioner, I will definitely stand up for your private property rights and protect those. And then I also want to bring good solid communication to the Commissioner's Office between the local government and the public. And do a really good job at trying to keep the public informed, not only on what the county government does, but also why the county government does what they do. And trying to help, help build a better relationship there so that there's a, an understanding there. Yep, and feel free to reach out to me, Facebook, Instagram, Adam's for Commissioner. And then I have a website, adamssforcommissioner.com, or email, adamssforcommissioner@gmail.com. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Tony Brockman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tony Brockman. I was born and raised here in Kalispel. I currently work at Sky Vault as a content manager. Many of you know Sky Vault, it's a local dynamic marketing and media company. I've been around the Young Professionals Group, I frequently attend chamber events. I'm a graduate of Flathead High and the University of Montana. I've been pretty involved in our community since 2014. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Flathead County Economic Development Authority. We are one of the two lead organizations behind the Kalispel Core and Rail redevelopment project. As you know, it is a, it's one of the most transformational projects in our community's history. In addition, I serve as a trustee for the Evergreen Rural Fire District. And I'm on Sheriff Brian Heino's Citizens Advisory Group. My campaign is focused on the Flatheads' future, our economy, growth, and increase in communication between you and the Commissioner's Office. What does that mean? I think that we need to diversify our economy, bring in more manufacturing, attract and retain employers. We need to think through our growth and be friendlier to our agriculture and manufacturing sectors over the next 20 years, as well as our population continuing to grow. And in terms of increase in communication, we need to hold Commissioner meetings at more accessible times. Not everyone can attend a Commissioner meeting at 9:00 AM. And we also need to bring in video capability to the County Commissioner's Office, to the chambers. Not, you know, if the Kalispel City Council can have video, there's no reason why the County Commissioners can't either. So please reach out to me, I'm on Facebook, I'm on Instagram. My email is brockmanfc@gmail.com. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tony. And then let's also hear from Kristin Larson.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Thank you for letting me share my platform today. I'm Kristin Larson, I was raised in the Flathead and I'm a business owner in Columbia Falls. Growing up in the Flathead, I always wished for more opportunities. So if elected, I want to bring and focus on jobs. People need better paying jobs here. And I think the county needs to be very proactive with tax abatements for new and expanding manufacturing facilities. Manufacturing jobs are solid paying jobs, so we need to support them and we need to create them. Secondly, our local government needs to be more accessible, just like Adams and Brockman have already stated. It needs to be transparent to the community. And I want to say thank you and that I love this platform. And I'm very thankful to the chamber for the leadership that you've already shown during this time. To have real time, to have real time information from Governor Bullock as a business owner was very important. When the community has involved, is involved, people are, can be invested and they can be more secure in what their government is doing, I know that I am. I want to help facilitate that in the government, in the County Commissioner's Office because the capability is already there, we just need to implement it. And thirdly, I want to support, and I do support play, recreational economy, ecotourism, because it brings money to the valley, food on the table. Montana brought in $3.7 billion in 2018 and we'll do it again. But more importantly, to the people here that live in play, I support the stewardship of our natural resources. We have something beyond precious here and we need to preserve it. We need to protect our surface and groundwater. I support the infrastructure expansion that will help us do that. And thank you for this opportunity, it's been a pleasure.
Great, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Looks like Brad Abel wasn't able to join us this morning, so I didn't want anybody to think that we had skipped him. As a friendly reminder, we do have a Q and A button at the bottom of your screen. So if you have any questions, please send those in and we'll get those asked. I am going to open it up to Q and A and our first question is from Chance. And his question is, how do you plan to balance our county's desire for a balanced, fiscally responsible budget and low taxes while strategically expanding community services amenities and amenities that keep the Flathead Valley dynamic and inviting? Specifically, as it relates to our public library, which is a cornerstone of any vibrant community and valuable resource. What is your stance on the current Commissioner's decision to stagnate funding and remove the library facilities from potential future building plans? Tony, do you want to start and answer that one? And just as a reminder, try to limit your answers to about 60 seconds for us, please.
Sure, libraries are important and we need libraries for a vibrant local community. I know that a lot of people from the hospital who have been attracted here to our community look at, and anyone, not just the hospital, look at local libraries and our education system. It's not easy balancing budgets and sometimes you got to make tough calls. I think that while we may not be right for a library right now in terms of a future expansion of a library, we need to be planning for one. And we can do that with good, solid, thoughtful budget making.
Great, and Kristin?
Hi, I believe that the library is very important to a vibrant community as well. I think that they've showed great leadership during this time of shelter in place, being very active online. And we've seen how important that the community, how important that the library is to the community.
And Elliot?
Yeah, trying to figure out my mute button here. Um, yeah, it's obviously, it's definitely one of those, but the funding is definitely a problem. It's, you know, county funding is like it is for us and our own families. There's only so much money and you've got so many projects. So there are tough calls that have to be made with funding and trying to prioritize where that funding goes. But we don't have limitless resources as a county and we do have to live within our budget. So that is, it's just one of those things, you have to balance out the, the most important needs that come up with the money that's available. And I know one of the things, obviously, like I mentioned, that we do need here is a new jail. And that's obviously very expensive, but as, you know, the county looks at a new jail being something that we're going to need, we need to be setting aside as much money for that as we can now and try and avoid having a big levy later on to fund that. So there, there are tough calls that have to be made and there's only so much money to go around. And you just have to be wise when you make those decisions.
Great. Kristin, we have a question that is specific for you, from Susan. And she wants to know what business do you own in Columbia Falls?
Pardon me, my mute button was on. Glacier Lanes in Columbia Falls, the bowling alley.
Great.
Yeah, we're, we're currently under construction right now.
Fun. Okay, so the next question is, as Flathead County continues to grow, how will you, as county commissioner, ensure that there is housing for all income levels? And let's start with you, Kristin.
Well, I think that we, first, we need to acknowledge that we do have an affordable housing crisis here in the valley. And I think that we're going to see some more of it, unfortunately. And it's a very broad problem and so we need many solutions.
Elliot?
Yeah, so affordable housing, it's been brought up before and it is obviously an issue. Like I said, I work in the construction trade, so I end up working on houses almost every day. The, I think the things that lead to, to higher priced housing, obviously, is you only have so much land. You can't make any more land. So land price is going up. And then the other thing that contributes to it is regulations. So the more regulations that you have, and you'll see this as you build, if you're building homes in maybe a city with more restrictive regulations versus in a county with less. Every time you add regulations to building projects, your costs go up. And they may seem small at the time, but every little thing adds up and it makes it more expensive. So those are the things that contribute to that. So trying to manage that. And then obviously, you can't make any more land. So as land prices go up, that's just part of it. But that is, that's what leads to the high priced housing in Flathead County.
And Tony?
Well, Kristin and Elliot are both correct. You know, in order to have true affordable housing, you have to have higher density and taller buildings as, as one additional component. The core, the Kalispel Core area and redevelopment project will incorporate those types of solutions into its overall plan. But we need to look at ways of continually, I believe we need to look at ways of continually increasing our wages here in the Flathead. And how do you do that? We need to, as county commissioners, partner with chambers of Congress, FECC, high schools, employers, you name it, to attract and retain employers of choice in our valley. And as, as a county commissioner, we should be able to be the catalyst to be able to pull those resources together and increase, help increase our wages and affordable housing options in the Flathead.
Great, thank you. Again, as a reminder, if you do have a question, please feel free to hit that Q and A button down at the bottom and type it in. Our next question comes from Brad. And it is, with the continued increase in desirability to live in places like the Flathead Valley, how do you handle bringing in new jobs and businesses while continuing to value lifelong residence of the valley and Montana? Elliot, let's go ahead and start with you.
Okay, let me, I'm trying to look at the question again, it sounded like a kind of a two-part question here. Okay, here we go. Yeah, okay, so as far as bringing jobs into Flathead County, you know, it's not really, I think people end up looking to the government oftentimes as the answer to the problem. And I think more often than not, that's not actually the answer to the problem. The free market economy will bring jobs in. And having a business friendly environment is going to be the best thing that you can do for bringing in jobs to Flathead County. I really think that's what drives the economy is when you have a free market economy.
Tony?
I'm, I'm, you know, being a part of the Flathead County Economic Development Authority, we're all about jobs. We think about it constantly, about how to attract and retain employers of choice in the valley. It's, I can assure you, it is not easy work. But the Flathead County Commissioners, or Flathead County EDA, is Flathead County's economic development arm. And I, as one of seven board members, constantly think about how to attract and retain good employers and, and make sure that people here can still live affordably. Because we're all, you know, we all came here and, or were born and raised here and we want to stay here. And it takes continual work, it takes work with our chambers of Congress, with our, with our local college. It's not easy work, but I assure you that there are people like myself who are thinking about it constantly.
Great, Kristin? Unmute, Kristin.
Can't get this down. I feel like we, we need affordability here in the valley. We're pushing out a lot of our workers because they can't afford to be here, so they're commuting back and forth. So I think we need to focus on that there.
Our next question comes from Clint. And his question is, we always hear candidates talk about not increasing property taxes as a way to buy more votes. With obvious expenses such as a new jail, et cetera, coming up inevitably, are you ready to have a real conversation with voters on property taxes increasing? Tony, do you want to go ahead and go first?
Yeah, um, you know, I think that the county commissioners need to have an honest conversation with the taxpayers of this county. That doesn't seem like something that the county commissioners want to do. They don't want to have those difficult conversations. You know, in terms of, you know, in terms of a jail specifically, our community for the next 30 years is probably going to need a 200 bed, a 250 bed facility that includes room for administrative functions and treatment programs. And something like that's going to cost, in the neighborhood of probably $75 million. Right now, I believe that there are four, I will call them plans, four plans for a jail or options. Options is a better word. You know, the county commissioners need to, with public input, pick a plan, go to the, or go to the public and present it honestly. You know, it's probably going to be 10 years out before we get a new jail, but we need to be having those conversations now. And yes, that's going to include, if the citizens want it, and if they want a new jail, it's going to mean a tax increase. It's just the reality of it. It's unfortunate, but we can only save so much money.
And Elliot?
Yeah, so Tony is right on the timeframe. Somewhere is in the vicinity of 10 years, I think, is probably the max amount of time that we can hold off on a jail. I would agree with Tony on that. I guess, as far as the property taxes though, I think, looking at that timeframe, I like to look at it optimistically, we have that much time. We need to be using that time really wisely now and trying to set aside as much money as we can. And that might mean also looking for property, if we're going to end up building a new jail, or whether we buy a building, depending on how that goes. Trying to get ahead of this thing and take care of as much of it as we can now, rather than waiting until all of a sudden it's here, we don't have the money and we've got a jail that's overflowing. So I think it's a kind of a good thing that we have a little bit of time here. We just need to be planning ahead. And, you know, this is one of those things we got to look at too with coronavirus and the, the post coronavirus world. We may end up seeing in Flathead County, you know, property values decreasing, depending on how long this lasts. And if we see, if we see that, that's also going to affect the tax base in Flathead County. And we're actually going to have less property taxes coming in to the county as properties are reassessed for lower values, if we see that. So it's going to be a little bit of a difficult time, but we need to be using this time that we have now before we're in, in emergency situation with the jail, to be trying to prepare ahead for that as much as possible.
Great. And Kristen?
To speaking of taxes, I'm, I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I believe that we need to be fiscally responsible there. And if it comes down to tough decisions like the jail, I think that we need to put it to a vote.
Okay, thank you. As a reminder, if you guys do have questions, please feel free to quick click the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen and send those in. Our next question is from Charlotte. And her question is, one of the powers of the county commissioners is appointing trustees to governing boards for organizations like the Health Board, Library Board, and others. How would you approach selecting qualified candidates? And how would public comment and endorsements affect the candidates you appoint? Let's go ahead and start with Kristen.
And that's a great question, Charlotte. I feel that it's very important who's sitting on those boards. And so that's why who you're electing as county commissioner matters. You know, we've got some, we've got some controversy right now with our, with our health board members. And so I think that's a big issue. I think that we need to be together on this and we need to be focused on being supportive.
Elliot?
Yeah, as, so as your, as a county commissioner points people to different boards, you really have to look at, you know, the, basically the board that you're looking at and finding people that are qualified to handle the issues with on, that are going to arise within that board. So obviously, all these boards are different. So you really have to find people that are qualified for whatever specific board you're looking for.
Tony?
Um, I agree with Kristen and Elliot. I do believe that the, the process of appoint, of board appointments needs to be more open and transparent. And the commissioners need to talk about their reasoning behind opening up or of appointing people. You know, I serve on two appointed county boards and I know the responsibility that comes with both those positions.
Okay, great. Our next question is from Clint. There's a lot of talk about, we need to plan, et cetera. The current county commission has lacked planning and has had poor communication track record. How will you keep us up to date in communicating timelines so we know what's being done? Elliot?
Yeah, I think, you know, we need to have a better sense of communication between whether it be media, newspapers, radio, social media, having more talks with the community and just being open to people about what's going on. And it is, obviously, it's one of those things that, you know, everybody kind of talks about doing it. And I think we just, we really, we need to make it happen. And I think it's something that can happen. And when we have better communication, you know, it's like any kind of a relationship. If you don't have communication, you're going to have problems. So if we can have some better communication between our local government and the people within the county, you're going to end up with a better relationship. A lot of things, these things that come up, you know, people may get upset over an issue and without a good sense of communication, people don't understand why these decisions are being made. And I think the why is very important on a lot of these things that, that happen within the county or with any local government for that matter. But obviously, this is a county issue at this point. And I think having that, that communication will lead to a whole lot better relationship between the public and the county.
Tony?
I agree. We need to, we need to be more transparent at our local government. We need to make the effort truly and succeed at that effort of increasing communication, which is why I want to hold commissioner meetings at friendlier times. Like I said earlier, not everyone can attend a 9:00 AM meeting. I want to bring video capability into the commissioners' chambers. So while you may not be able to attend a meeting in person, you can view it in the comfort of your own home. Calisbell City Council has video capabilities. There's no reason why we, as taxpayers of the county, shouldn't have that same capability. It's 2020 and we need to get on with it.
And Kristen?
We need better communication and we need to have the input of our community because we need to be asking what our community needs.
Okay, our next question is from Chance. And it is, in consideration of the challenges faced by the current commissioners, how do you plan to establish a good working relationship with the remaining commissioners? Tony, do you want to go ahead and start?
Well, I think I have a good, a good relationship with the current county commissioners. They have appointed me to two boards right now. I think anyone can work alongside anyone else as long as we are open and honest and have the public's, public's best interest at heart.
Kristen?
I pride myself in always being very collaborative, so I think that that will be helpful.
And Elliot?
Yeah, I actually know all of the current county commissioners and I'm, I'm willing to work with anybody. If you just, you know, if there's differences, we have to set those aside to work together. And, you know, there's obviously, there's always going to be differences of opinion and different things, but we still can work together. And I think, you know, we all have the, we all have what's best in mind, what's best for the Flathead in mind as a goal. So I'm willing to work with anybody.
Great. Our next question is, with the increasing population, what are your plans to get ahead of crime and mental health needs here in the valley? Kristen, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I think that that's a great question. We need to focus on our mental health. I think especially now after what we've been going through, a lot of us are going to have some PTSD and we know that we have a lot of drug problems in the valley.
Elliot?
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a tough one. There obviously is a lot of, a lot of crime and drug use has been pretty bad in the Flathead. Trying to get ahead of that, you know, it really comes, it's a law enforcement issue. But as county commissioner, county commissioners are the ones that handle funding for law enforcement. So as, as it relates to that, that's really kind of where the, the county commissioner's responsibility in that lies. But it is definitely, it's a concern. It's something that we need to look at. And, you know, I think the new jail obviously will help, but we do see, you know, we have seen an increase in mental illness with a lot of people around the country. But as, as county commissioners are concerned, it's really a funding thing. That's really where their say in that goes. And to prioritize that.
Great. And Tony?
So I serve on Sheriff Brian Hino's Citizens Advisory Board. And one of the things that our local law enforcement will tell you is that a lot of criminals and mentally ill people do is they go to jail to receive mental health care. That's no way of handling that situation. I don't have the answer for that, but I would be happy to work with anyone to help solve that problem, both decreasing mental illness or addressing mental illness in our community and decreasing crime.
Great. Our next question is, what's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces or rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing our existing home and storefronts? Elliot, do you want to go first?
Um, I'm a little confused on the question. Again, what was the question?
What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces or rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing the existing homes and storefronts?
Well, if it's within the city, it's not really, it's not going to be a county issue, but I don't think the county government is going to have a say in whether or not people are building new homes or where they want to build homes. I mean, I don't know if it's a housing question. I guess I'm a little confused by the question. Obviously, housing is important and we do need affordable housing. I'm not quite sure what the question is there.
Okay, I'll try to get some more, but we'll go ahead and cycle through. Tony, do you want to take a stab at that one?
Well, I agree with Elliot. The question is a little more focused on the city, but I still think it's, I still think it's important. You know, it depends on the use. We can rehab and reuse existing buildings and storefronts and houses. And for some, for some uses, we would need to build. So it would be a mix of both. But of course, I'm speaking on, on a countywide level. And we would of course have to have the input of developers and other such and residents. Yeah.
Kristen?
I think that we need to focus on rehabbing what we already have to make better, but also being able to make more room for affordable housing.
Okay. Our next question is from Lee and it's directed at Elliot. One of our main, one of your main platforms is protection of private land rights. I'm not familiar with the problems or threats to private land. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, the, so private property rights, I'm not, I'm not saying that there is a current threat, but I think it's like all of our rights, all of our rights are always, you know, you're only one step away from having rights taken. And it's something that we need to take a stand for. I believe that rights are an individual right. If we look at the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, it's pretty clear that rights, they don't come from the government. It's actually the government's job to protect those rights. And those are rights that belong solely to the individual. So it's something that we have to work at protecting. I care about all individual rights, but as a county commissioner, property rights are the one thing that we, we see come across the desk of the commissioners the most.
Tony, do you have any thoughts on that question that you'd like to add?
Nope, it was directed towards Elliot.
Okay, and Kristen, do you want to add anything?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay. Our next question is from Charlotte. This question is about your philosophy of governance. If you're elected, do you consider your civic responsibility to represent primarily those who voted for you or the Flathead Valley population as a whole, including those who political views differ from yours? Tony, let's go ahead and start with you.
Well, as our next county commissioner, I hope to represent all citizens. I certainly have the ability to talk to anyone about any issue. And since all county taxpayers would be paying my salary, I work for them. And regardless of if you vote for me or not, I still have to answer to you and, and, and talk to you. So I would look to represent all the citizens of Flathead County.
Kristen?
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with Tony. I'm a very open-minded person and I love collaboration. I feel it's important that everybody's voices are heard here in the valley, so I will represent you.
Elliot?
Yeah, as county commissioner, I mean, it's simple. I represent the whole county. Whether you voted for me or not, I represent the county. That's the job of county commissioner. I'm willing to work with anybody.
Our next question is from Brad. And the question is, is what can young professionals in the valley do to create higher paying jobs and continue to strengthen the local economy? Kristen?
That goes back to what I was saying earlier, is I think that the county needs to be proactive about our tax abatements and so we can expand and build more manufacturing jobs.
Elliot?
Yeah, you know, it's not the county's job to create jobs. It's not the government's job to create jobs. But the county and government in general can create a business friendly climate. I think that's important. And they need to, oftentimes, what needs to happen is the government needs to get out of the way of hardworking Americans and let them do what they do best.
So as I've mentioned a couple of times here, I serve on the Flathead County Economic Development Authority and I'm a young professional. Here's what you can do. You can get involved with your local government and help make decisions that increase manufacturing jobs and attract those employers of choice. As I said before, the Flathead County Economic Development Authority is the county's economic development arm. We receive about $500,000 a year to do economic development, to attract those manufacturing jobs, to do projects like the Glacier Row Park. So I would include, or so I would encourage Brad and other young professionals to get involved and have a seat at the table and make sure that their voice is heard.
Great, thank you. And just as a reminder, if you do have questions, please type them into the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen so we can get to those. Our next question is, what do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? And Elliot, do you want to go first?
Yeah, so most pressing needs for infrastructure within the county. We do have some space needs within the county. The DMV is obviously that one. Anybody that's been down there to get a title transfer or anything lately knows that they're oftentimes really, really swamped. So that's one of the needs. And then obviously, jail is another one that's coming up. I think those are probably two of the most pressing needs as far as infrastructure is concerned within Flathead County.
Tony?
Well, Elliot is correct in terms of county administrative needs. And I think that we need to be thoughtful about that in terms of long-term planning. Right now, it seems as though the county commissioners want to put Band-Aid solutions on everything. More broadly though, we need to work with our state and cities to increase infrastructure. You know, reserve drive is a prime example of that. A county commissioner can work with the state to try to speed that process along. And there are plenty of other in, you know, intersections and roadways in our county that need improving. And so, you know, we just need to be a pro, as a county commissioner, we need to be a proactive advocate for our community's needs.
And Kristen?
Yeah, I think that our, our county has been talking about for a long time of infrastructure of our roads and also our jail.
Okay, great. Our next question is from Toby. And it is, as an elected member of the county commission, you're one of the three leaders of the county. Give a specific example of your experience as a leader. And let's start with Tony.
Well, thanks Toby. Um, you know, as I said at the top of this hour, I've had the opportunity to serve on a variety of boards. I've pretty much been involved my entire life with boards and committees, both locally and statewide. You know, currently I serve on the Flathead County Economic Development Authority. It's the county's economic development arm. We are one of two organizations that are leading the transformation of downtown Calisbell. And I consider myself privileged every day to help shape our community's future. You know, I serve additionally, I serve as a trustee for the Evergreen Rural Fire District. It is the busiest rural fire district in, in the state, or excuse me, in the county. You know, and I'm so inspired by those guys because, you know, especially during this pandemic, our our first responders are the ones that had to go in when no one else would and and help their community. You know, and we had frequently, in the last month and a half, we've had very difficult conversations about what that means. A leader has to make tough decisions, you know. And additionally, I serve on Sheriff Brian Heino's Citizens Advisory Board. You know, and we frequently have cuff, or we frequently have tough conversations there as well about the future of law enforcement in our community and what that means in 2020.
Yeah. Kristen?
I am a business owner, and I've created two successful businesses, and so I believe that that is good.
And Elliot?
Yeah, so as leadership goes, you know, I've, I've worked for a number of years, like I said, in construction, and I think that's something that, you know, you end up working with a lot of other people, a lot of other trades, different companies. And it really does give you a good opportunity to be able to kind of work with other people, and I think that's an important skill. And my wife and I also, we own a couple of rental properties and, you know, you know, helps out with affordable housing. And then I also currently serve on the Flathead County Planning Board, which has been a really good experience and a great way to learn about some of the the land use issues that come up within Flathead County.
Great, thank you. So if you have any last-minute questions, please be sure to type them in that Q and A button down at the bottom of your screen. The next question is from Charlotte. Do you think three county commissioners is the right number to represent a county of this size? Kristen?
It's a good question, Charlotte. I think for now that three is a good number, yes.
Elliot?
Yeah, I think three is probably what we need to stick with. I think I think almost every county in Montana at this point has three commissioners. I could be wrong on that. I think there might be one that has five, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But I think three seems to be working out well.
And Tony?
So here's where my public service nerd knowledge comes out. To answer Charlotte's question, yes. Even though Flathead County is a large county, three is plenty. So Montana has a state law that says that you can, every ten years, reevaluate your local government. And in 2004, Rivalley County decided to increase their number of county commissioners from three to five because of stalemate and infighting in a pretty toxic environment. So the citizens of Rivalley County elected two more additional county commissioners, put them in place, and according to that state law, you have to live with that form of government for one decade. What the citizens of Rivalley County found was that the problems that they initially, that they were trying to address were actually exacerbated. And it was hell for them to live with that for ten years. They have since repealed that, and they're back to three. But here's the additional thing. Those two additional county commissioners get pensions and benefits until they die. So to answer your question directly, three right now is plenty.
Great. Well, thank you so very much. It looks like we are just about out of time, so we'll go ahead and wrap up. I believe that as all of the candidates mentioned, they are available through different platforms on social media, so if you still have additional questions, I would encourage you to reach out to them. And just as a couple of friendly reminders, ballots have already been mailed out. Per Monica's recommendation, get those back in the mail by the twenty-second of this month so that they hit deadlines, or as election time deadline gets a little bit closer, you can find information on where to drop those off around the valley. For those of you that have joined us today that are interested in more information about the Flathead area young professionals, feel free to hit us up on Facebook, or there's more information on the Chambers website. We'd love to talk to you. And there is a recap of this. Kate was so great to stream this live on Facebook, so if you want to go back and review any of the questions and answers that the candidates gave, that will be available for you, I believe, on the Chambers Facebook page. So again, thank you so much for your time, Tony, Elliot, and Kristen. We really appreciate your openness with us, and good luck. Everybody have a wonderful day.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Good event.